I'll make the call of meeting on ISD 701, order August 21st, 3:30 PM, Central Daylight Time in the boardroom. I'd like to welcome everybody here with them, with Luke, I too. Pledge of allegiance, please stand if you wish.
The flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. With that, is there any public comment?
We have none, Mr. Chair.
No public comment. With that, I got a couple of things here. Under Item 4, when we come to administrators, we're going to take on, there are two addendums. One's going to be Item K to go at the end. It's the Clinical Professional Services Agreement. We'll have a little discussion on that. We'll take that separately. The other one's a full wheel, a hiring keel in the, on the moment. As a one-time, full-time, or 1.0 full-time with speech-language pathologist, Washington ELC effective August 26th, 2024, excuse me. That's going to go at the end of your consent agenda, be added. But we're taking a consent agenda all at once, so I'm just starting to make that one clear that if there are any questions. That being said, who administrative reports anything from the referees?
I have a, I have a couple of things. I was here this past weekend for a volleyball tournament with our varsity. And number one, our custodian, Al, just really helpful and so accommodating. So thank you to Al. But one of the things I noticed, this is the second time now I've worked a volleyball tournament here at the high school. And I don't know if people are familiar, but in the concession stand where you are, you can, you can see the entrance into the men's bathroom. Not so much the women's bathroom, you can see from there, but the men's. And I can't tell you how many times it was mistaken for the women's bathroom. And on both ends, it, you know, it has the small square that says men's and same with the women's on the other side. But I think what's confusing is, you know, everybody has different bathrooms. So on the left might be men's and on the right is the women's in the same entrance. And I think that's what was happening.
Okay.
But it just happened a lot. There's a lot of girls, you know, that mistakenly went in. And I was looking to see, you know, it would be nice, I don't want anything to look tacky, but if we could do some sort of wall sticker like we have here above the mirrors there in bold that say men's, women's.
Sure.
And I only say that just because it's, again, I've seen it happen so many times and, you know, it's embarrassing for those.
Just better signage for the whole thing.
Yeah, so just an FYI.
Sure. And I think Director Gabor, you correctly, if I'm wrong, but when they did those remodels, I believe they flipped them.
That's what somebody had mentioned also.
I think, we certainly have that, yeah.
Yeah. And so, I mean, if you're here every day, you, you know, but if you're not, it seems to be just a mistake that people are making.
Well, I'll talk to Tyler. We can get some signage there to make it more obvious. And I think the other thing that plays into it, you, you know, you go to so many other places and bathrooms are all unisex now.
Yeah.
So you're just, you're just walking into a stall and I'm sure some people think that too. But I, we will address it and get some more signage, so.
Okay, great.
Hopefully it's not an issue.
Yeah. And then the other thing I wanted to, to bring up, and I don't, I don't know if this is the right time in the agenda to talk about it or not, but I did have somebody to, somebody reach out to me, a parent, and ask, you know, while we were, at our last meeting, we were looking at, you know, the transportation costs that we'd be saving with eliminating some routes. Asked why in the whole process of cutting costs, we never discussed, and maybe it happened years prior to meeting on the board, but never discussed going to a four-day and the cost savings that would bring. Because I, if I take from wrong, and you may have already, you may know off the top of your head, but I swore earlier this summer or the end of the school year, there was, it was on the radio about a school in our area doing that, starting that. And then there was an ad in the paper about that school doing that. And I know that that private school in Virginia has done that in years, but is it Martin Rehne doing it this term?
Martin Rehne, I don't know if they, if they passed it, but Carlton did.
Yes.
I know Carlton did.
And that's the information they had sent me about Carlton, so.
The Southeast, I know, was looking at it, just in talking with other superintendents, there's a handful of districts that we're looking at just as a cost savings measure. Now, one, one thing that I had always, you know, in the back of my mind with a four-day work week is that I don't, I just don't believe our public would embrace it. Just in the past, we, you know, we've had conversations about days that we take out of school and what do parents do with daycare and a lot of folks have been vocal about that. But it's certainly something that we could, we could dig in and do a study on and see, see how it would benefit us.
And I'm thinking, you know, I completely agree that, you know, there are families that it would be a hardship for with having to find daycare.
Yep.
On the flip side of it, I'm also thinking that's probably a little bit appealing, you know, for students in other districts to have an incentive to come.
Yep.
Which, you know, we're always looking for new students.
Yep.
And, you know, I'm just going to guess and assume that a Friday is when we possibly have the most absenteeism in our students. And maybe that would also help our attendance, you know, if they're not having to. But I understand that it, you know, it's a whole big ordeal and things to look at. But again, I was asked and I thought, you know, that is a good question and, you know, when we're looking to cut, it, it's just something I was curious about also.
Yeah, and I mean, the old, I mean, just personally, in our district and just education, I think west time in front of students is just not a good idea. And an extended day, if you're an elementary teacher and you're looking at a longer date, it's tough. I mean, it's, kids, kids sometimes are, are done by lunchtime and the afternoon's a real struggle. And if you were there till four, and, but it, but it's possible, it can be done. It's, it's just, I didn't really bring it forward because I really didn't think our community would embrace it, but if it's something that people are interested in, I would sure do the work.
We've tried to do this, we had this discussion when we made Senator Ball years ago, John. And when you look at it, the costs that you save, it's not that much as you were thinking. You're, you know, 20% less in time in class, it doesn't mean 20% saved. You still have to staff, you still have to pay the teacher's part. They're going to still, they're going to take cut pay. So you're saving transportation and lunch and things like that. But the other side of it was, the only thing I've read to this point on it was academic that it's just going to do as well.
And see, I don't know where that goes.
It said, they leave that seat time in front of a teacher and take one day away from them. That's a lot. And you can't extend, like you said, extend the date. That cuts the kids' work opportunities, decrease daycare costs. Look at the things.
Yeah. But it's, it's, it is something to explore. I mean, we've got to look at all the options and yes, absolutely.
There's pros and cons and everybody feels differently about them. I think if, you know, look at what we're doing with the virtual boot jacket, which is a thinking outside the box and, and being a leader in that, and that's exciting. I think if, you know, we're always looking for how can we raise enrollment and sometimes we have to think out the box and we can't just assume that they're just going to come. There has to be something that holds them in.
Yep.
So anyway, again, I just wanted to bring that up because it was asked to me and they were curious as to why that wasn't discussed, so.
Sure. We'll keep an eye on it and see how the neighboring schools do too, so.
Yeah. I just want to add, I pulled off a summary of the Ed Policy Omnibus Bill. And when the session ended, there's a provision in there that addresses four-day-a-week school week, school days, four-day school, four-day-a-week school. And I feel like by the time this was written into legislation, we were already down the path of reconfiguring the grades in our schools. So to layer that on top of it this year would have been really important. But the other thing is, could we do anything creatively? I mean, maybe, maybe high school age could be successful with that length of a school date and give four-day option, maybe elementary not, I don't know.
My question is athletics. I'm not sure.
Got to get here.
If you, in the old days, if you missed a day of school, you play football on Friday, Friday's your off day, are you ineligible to play in that day?
I would say no, if you're in school on Thursday.
Don't have rules change.
Well, what, what a lot of schools do is they'll, like, the Friday or the, or the fifth day of the week is kind of an open, kids can come and go, they can get help from teachers, there's some office hours. I think kids still come and go on those days depending on the situation, but, I mean, Mr. Turner, if we, if kids are in school on Thursday and we have five or four-day work week, or four-day school week, they can still be eligible on Friday.
Because two hundred doesn't break down and they have, yeah, they don't have any issues with that as far as, as long as those students are in there.
But that's the point, though, we wouldn't change. We'd have to, yeah, after we came through.
Okay, thank you. With that, I'll turn it over to Superintendent Rick and Mr. Turner to discuss it. Yeah, you would think.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome.
So we have, would you like me to read the motion?
Sure.
Our motion is to approve the Clinical Professional Services Agreement between ISD number 701 and Range Regional Health Services for athletic training services for the 2024 through 2027 school years. Would you like to discuss it at this point? Mr. Chair, do you?
We approve vote, if anybody has any questions. Hom范for approval.
I'll support.
Second for any discussion.
Chair, I have a question. So I tried to get through it as much as I could, having received this late today. But it talks about regular season athletic coverage. I know that when we have Christmas tournaments, there's typically athletic trainers. And it looks like this contract requires compensation at $40 per hour for non-regular season athletic event coverage. And I'm just wondering what impact this is going to have on that and on booster clubs. Has anybody had conversation with the booster clubs?
So right now, we won't have our boosters.
Stand up so we can hear them. Thank you.
But Keith, let me add, and it also includes if we have more than one home event on a day, that second trainer would also cost $40 per hour. So how that all fits into, into this?
Yeah, so right now, so we, what happened with OA, they came out and they essentially dropped us. So we had to go out and find a provider. And I did reach out to several providers and Fairview came back with a contract right away. Ascencia came back, but they put us on hold and then also St. Brooks put us on hold. So the biggest thing is making sure, because we have to have a athletic trainer at every event. If we don't, then we have to postpone it or cancel it. We have to have a provider there. So right now, yeah, so that is going to have some impact on us. If we don't have anyone, it'll be a lot more than $40 an hour. So I looked into contracting, they have a system out there now, they have independent contractors for athletic trainers. It's $120 an hour to bring a person in, so.
So Keith, did we, in our old agreement with Orthopedic Associates, did we have any extra hourly compensation?
No.
Above and beyond, it was just all covered?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I have, I have two folks here from Fairview too, so if you wanted to ask them any questions, Jamie and Kev.
I don't have any concern about their ability to provide services. I just want to understand the ramifications it's going to have on the events we're offering and to our booster clubs. I mean, I honestly, I was surprised to get this today. I wasn't aware that we were negotiating athletic training contracts.
I have talked about that at your last board meeting. That was, was that July or early?
Well, and this, this is last minute. I mean, it truly is. It's, and I think there's some reasoning for that is Keith has to have impact training done on concussions before we begin. And that, that would be scheduled for Thursday, Friday or early next week?
Yep, it's going to be this Thursday, Friday if we get the contracts signed.
So do you want, do you want to talk about that if that, if that doesn't happen?
Yeah, so that's, so if that doesn't happen again, we're looking at, we have a soccer game on Saturday and then next Tuesday, we have a girls' soccer game. And again, you can't, you don't have, if you don't have a baseline for those student athletes for concussions, then we probably shouldn't be having those events either.
And I'm not.
No, I'm just, but I'm just saying where we were at as far as where we were put with our provider leaving, this is where we're at there.
And I'm saying financially, as a board, as a district, I don't want to put our booster clubs in a spot where we're making them financially, where it's a financial difficulty. So if there's additional fees, I think we need to have a conversation on how those are going to be covered.
What's the difference between this contract and our last one with Orthopedic Associates? So is there a monetary difference?
Yeah, so with this contract, yeah, like she said, the, the extra athletic.
I understand the $40.
Yeah.
But the standard agreement, what is the difference between Orthopedic Associates and this one?
It's pretty much the same, except for the, the extra.
$40.
Yep, the extra $40.
So how much more do you anticipate that it's going to cost?
I haven't even dipped those dollars yet. My biggest thing is making sure that we still have our events and we, we stay on track and we don't have to postpone or cancel anything.
So my other question is this. In a former life, when I ran tournaments, you had to have an EMT or above to run a tournament. So what is the difference in, in services provided by an athletic trainer versus a physical therapist? Because I think this contract says it could be either at an event.
So I'm pretty sure our physical therapists are certified too. You could speak to that, Kev.
Yeah, so the physical therapist, and we wrote that in there to be able to provide enhanced coverage. So a physical therapist is a doctoral level education with advanced medical screening and testing. The physical therapist that would be providing most of the athletic training services here is out, is actually a paramedic as well. But anyways, when it comes to credentialing and level of services that's provided, they're again qualified to provide those services. One, just further enhancement, I'll say two is, you know, in looking at the differences and the services that are provided, I know in our conversations, it sounded like there was maybe two days of training room coverage and then, and then the sporting event coverage. You know, our plan is to have more consistent Monday through Friday coverage of the training room. And again, that $40 fee is then again, if an additional trainer is requested by the school.
Just to make it clear now for the public watching too, this is just for home events, correct?
Yeah, this is just.
Not worries about, yeah, going on the road. And it's not very often that we have two events on the same day during the fall.
We will, so this is crazy. So next Thursday, we will have three events at home. We'll have volleyball, football, but again, those are swimming, you can have a, we can have the trainer there for a little bit because that starts at five, then they can come over to volleyball and then finish up at football.
Do we have any soccer and football games that are both home games this year?
No, we wouldn't have, because that typically, our soccer games are Tuesday, Thursday and Saturday. And football is on Friday nights. And then we don't have to have the athletic trainer at our seventh and eighth grade events. We've, we've never had a athletic trainer at those events.
And I just want to say too, the board, you, you know that I don't like bringing you last minute things and I don't, this isn't something that I like to do. But I really felt that we're, we're in, and painted into a corner here that we need to get that, that impact training done for our kids. My concern is that if that wasn't done and for some reason we move ahead, God forbid, something happens and we, we would be liable for not completing that training prior to the first event. So we're kind of painted into a little bit of a corner unless Keith is going to cancel some stuff coming up here quickly. And I'm sorry to put you in that spot. It's not anything that I relish or it's not like to tune.
So this is a three-year contract. Is there any room where after the first contract, there can be any revisions? Since this is coming last minute or once it's three years, it's three years and it's a done deal?
I think in the language that we talked about, I mean, anything can be mutually agreed upon and can be changed. So I think both parties would have to be in agreement to change that, but yes, I think there's a process for it.
MOU's or something like that.
The other thing I think I saw in here, it's a three-year contract and it expires at the end of midnight on the three-year anniversary of the effective date. And now I can't find the effective date, but I thought I saw it here. It was when it was signed. And I'm just wondering if we should put a different end date? Because we don't want to be left with the end date of this contract at the end of August or the beginning of September, three years from now, right? Like if Fairview decided or Range Regional decided to get out of the contract?
And be right back where we are last minute.
Yeah, I don't want it to end up putting us in a corner again, three years from now.
When it's, you have the three years, August, 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 that's when the stuff happens and you need to sign.
Well, then maybe we need to put an earlier intent to sever clause in here if, if either party intends to terminate it, so.
A good date would probably be the end of May, beginning of June.
There you go.
Yeah, because we got late notice of our departure, which put us in a spot that we're.
Right. We don't want that.
No. Okay, well, we got to prove it for those stipulations. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
For the same sign. Motion carried. Mr. Turner, did you hear us? We can put that stipulation in there.
We were just saying, so they would have to send it back to their folks and then get that changed.
What do you decide for a date?
What's that?
What date did we decide to put?
Well, we'll wait to see if they go along with it for some.
Oh, I don't see any problem. Jamie's going to tell me, they're going to go along with it.
You tell me what date you like, I'll reach out to them and have them put it in there.
Yeah, we can, we can send it down to the legal team, so, and just get their thoughts on it and get back to you guys.
Whatever date, whatever came first.
Yeah, so we'll talk about that. Can you look at the end of May, beginning of June?
Okay.
So it would be whatever that three-year.
Thank you, Beth.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck to all of us. Thank you, good discussion. Anything else from the administrative? Hearing none, any reports? Hearing none? Would I apply motion to approve the agenda?
Oh.
Support.
Board Director Volter, support Board Director Gabori, any discussion?
Let's have one question. We have a ninth period basketball. Do we have applications up for ISD?
For the postings?
Yes.
We, we've done so many postings here in last, but yes, basketball, eight feet, nine feet, I think it was just posted, posted, maybe seven, so.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
For the same sign. Motion carried, thank you. Section item six, motion to approve the consent agenda.
Oh, both.
Support Board Director Volter, support Board Director McGlaughlin, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
For the same sign. Motion carried, thank you. Section item seven, administrative business, Mr. Alex.
Mr. Chair, item A is a motion to approve the resolution to accept donations consisting of $500 donation to support Sarah Nelson's FACS class.
So. Board Director McGlaughlin, support Board Director Volter, any discussion?
Is this anonymous or don't we say where the money is from?
Sometimes they don't want to be.
Okay, so it's an anonymous thing.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
For the same sign. Motion carried, thank you.
Item D is a motion to approve the resolution relating to the election of school board members and to call for a district general election.
So. Board Director McGlaughlin, support Board Director Volter, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
For the same sign. Motion carried, thank you.
Item C is a motion to approve the MOU between ISD number 701 and APOK for the purposes of coordinating mutually beneficial activities. The parties involved should better provide services for children and families through July 1, 2024, June 3, 2025.
So. Board Director Martin, support Board Director McGlaughlin, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
For the same sign. Motion carried, thank you.
Item D is a motion to approve the purchase of services agreement between ISD number 701 and FACS Education Solutions from September 3, 2024 through June 4, 2025.
So. Board Director McGlaughlin, support Board Director Martin, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
For the same sign. Motion carried, thank you.
Item E is a motion to approve the early learning center student handbook for 2024-25 school year.
So. Support. Board Director Martin, support Board Director Gabori, any discussion?
When will this go into effect? So like, if you look at, I don't bring it up, if you look at our site right now, it's got last year's information. When will this be updated?
So I can just.
We reversed it the last week, but go ahead.
Yes, so we, so for instance, like the handbook updates and that on the website, that won't be an issue. Those, like building principals have access, they can change pages. What we're struggling with is, I use Pam as an example, if I can Pam. Pam doesn't, Pam probably goes into that system once a year. And to go in and find your login information, it all changes on us. And unless you do it every single day, it's kind of like you have to relearn. It's the same with me when I go in there. So where Joel Anderson has sent out a whole, in Joel's way, how he does, he sends out a whole step-by-step process of how you change your webpage. So when teachers come back and when all of our staff returns, that's our goal, is to get that up and running before the first day of school. And it, and the problem, the problem with the webpage is that we, when we put static information on it, then you have to go in and change it. So when we say 23, 24, then somebody's got to go in next year. So we're trying to word things in such a way that you don't have to go in every year and change everything. And that's the, that's the trouble with these static webpages, even though I think our new webpage is 100 times better than the old one. It's, that's the issue we had with the old one and it's the issue that we continue to have with the new one, so.
Well, you know, I'm just trying to be here for.
Absolutely.
The new student that wants to come here.
Yes.
To get here.
But the information.
Instead of getting told to go to five different places.
The information to be clear and concise.
Right.
Yes.
So question, it might not be you, it might be maybe principals. Is this handbook, are these handbooks that go on the website put on in PDF format or are they in a format that you can easily go more, once you get logged in, that you can more easily update? And I only say that because as you go through the handbook, right, you have a lot of turnover throughout the year.
Yep.
It would be nice if somebody turns over as part of that process to say, oh, like, Coach so-and-so is no longer the whatever coach, but now it's so-and-so or the administrative assistant or whomever. or the administrative assistant, or whomever it is. So, it can be updated more easily.
So, the high school, the high school's page is a, is a Google, is a Google document that's live. So, when we make an edit to it and we refresh the document, it's live on the website.
Perfect.
The, the only issue is there's, it's located in two places on the district website. One under district handbooks, and then the other one for high school handbooks. So, I, I make sure that the high school page that I can edit is, is updated. But then it would fall on Joel, who oversees the district one, to ensure that that link is, is the same link. Because that's what we had, what happened last year, is the link on the high school page was updated, but the link on the district page was not updated.
So, we don't have access to that.
We don't have access to that.
So, okay, I have to be dumb about this. Shouldn't you, like you, be the data owner of the high school handbook?
We are. So, the high schools, the pages that we own and the handbook that we own, we have a Google doc, it's live, so any changes, so if you approve it tonight, it's live. But on the district page where it says handbooks, Joel has to update that because he has the access to the district pages. We can't touch that.
It just seems like when it's updated once, that it would update every place that this document's located, but.
It does, it's two different links, so it would have to make it one link.
Yeah, and it should be one link.
It should.
I mean, that's, that doesn't make sense.
That's horrible.
Because it used to be one link, but when we updated and put a different format, it was a different link.
But I have to say and commend all of you across our district. These handbooks have improved a thousand times, and I love it when you talk about the Blue Jacket pride and the PBIS program. I love the fact that there's specific age-appropriate examples that are given so kids know what's expected. Because, you know, positive or respectful or whatever, in different homes may mean different things. So, kudos to everybody that did this.
I, I agree, and these things are so big that if you've got three kids in the school, how many are you going to read?
And we're not, we're not there yet, but I do have a question about the high school handbook.
Sure.
So, one of the changes I saw on there were that the students can wear a light jacket or a leather jacket. I guess, why so specific? I mean, if I look at a thin jacket, okay, but our, that's very opposite of what our leather jackets are. And those are pretty thick, bulky, right? So, I was kind of curious why it's so specific to a light or a leather jacket, rather than just a jacket? And I guess the other concern about that is, you know, in a leather jacket, again, because they're pretty bulky, you know? There's things that they can conceal within that jacket.
Sure.
And I guess to me, that becomes a safety issue.
This is where we do.
I can answer that. So, our policy used to be that there was no jackets whatsoever. All jackets had to be in a locker. So, right now, carry would be a dress code violation for wearing a jean jacket. It was like all or nothing. And some of our rooms are freezing cold, but, you know, the, the style for a lot of our, especially our females, was to wear like those long, black, underarm jackets. They wanted to wear those all the time in our baseballs. And so, that's why we had that rule. And so, we compromised, after talking to student council and having some teacher input on it, the compromise was, let's have light jackets be okay. So, if they wear jean jacket, leather jacket, or light jacket, it's okay. We don't want the big, long, bulky winter coats. So, that's, that was it.
Because we did get into a battle of semantics with a, a student who was in the right, he was wearing a, like a full zip, you know, so, say a light, a light jacket. And he said, this is lighter material than that girl's fitted sweatshirt. Why is this not one? She can conceal more in that baggy sweatshirt than I have. And it's, we had to go, last year, the handbook says no jackets.
But I guess that's where, I, I'm wondering why we're so specific? Because what you may consider light, I might not consider light. And then the leather jacket, it's nowhere near being light, but it can, so we can't wear a bulky jacket as long as it's a leather jacket.
We didn't want the long, so the, the handbook's changed in the 90s with all the combi shooting because the kids wore dusters and hid their weapons like in the Matrix. And so, it swept across the nation that no jackets, no long dusters, that's where it came from. And we want to be, you know, we want to be safe and welcoming. We want to promote kids to wear leather jackets because they've been, have gone off the side. People aren't buying the leather jackets. And we, and we want school pride, so if they wear a leather jacket, a light jacket, that's okay, we just don't want the big, bulky coats. So, that's, that, that, but that, but we can be more clear. We can add words that make it more concise.
I think, I, I just think, I understand the leather jacket, that's school pride. But if I want to wear my Columbia winter jacket, but now you're saying that's too, too bulky, it might still be less bulky than a leather jacket. I'm just saying that if it's.
If there's a light Columbia jacket, I don't see a.
But what, what is considered light, again, that's different. Again, I, it's, it's just the verbiage that I think people can still be in there.
If you, if you could give, give us some concise things, I think Chance got it up right now and we can put it in, and we can make it more clear.
I think we do have to change it. Not be so specific.
Great, I can. Letter sweaters. Ready? Letter sweaters.
Yeah, they're, they're very expensive, but they're, we have people looking at to see if we can bring those letter sweaters back.
But, I mean, I just thought, just to, to help the situation a bit, I mean, you, you typically, I would guess, have conversations with students about what they're wearing, right? If somebody came in and they had a baked-down puffy coat on, you'd probably pull them in and say, that's not appropriate, you know, let's find you something else to wear tomorrow.
Or let's put that in your locker for now.
Right, I mean, that doesn't just like an instant bam, dress code violation.
No, they're not going to get in trouble for it, it's just like, put that in your locker.
Yeah, and if, now, if it's every day and you talk to them over and over and over again and call a parent, then it's a different story, I suppose, but it's kind of case by case. I guess, if you've got kids walking around big, heavy coats, you'd address it with them, I would think.
It's not, it hasn't really been a huge problem there. Do you want us to say no leather jackets, or?
No, I'm, I'm fine with the leather jacket. I, I, I think that's fine. I'm just saying, it would just, it's, the verbiage in there seemed odd to say just a light jacket or a leather jacket.
Yeah.
There's a lot of variables in that.
Yes, there you go.
Each case could be different.
I think we need to give the students a little credit. I think they know the difference between a light jacket and a leather jacket versus a heavy jacket. And if somebody wants to push you envelope and wear their puffy jacket, you're going to pull them off to the side and talk to them anyways, just to let them know it's not acceptable. And I, I think, you know, we're kind of mixing words here. To me, a light jacket, if somebody's on a volleyball team, they have, you know, the kind of jacket you have on, it's a light, and it's a volleyball jacket, you know? So, I think it's, the verbiage to me seems to be fine, it's just a matter of letting the students know. And they're smart enough to know, as I said, they want to push the envelope and test it, test the waters.
We could add no big, bulky, or like, or working, something like that, no bulky winter coats. Would that be okay? Because like a leather jacket, a small Columbia jacket, I don't see it like the jacket that Mr. Booth is wearing. You know, that would have been.
Definitely, that's a dress code violation.
Right now, until you approve it, that's a dress code violation, that's a dress code violation. It was just ridiculous how, you know, especially how cold it gets in the building sometimes. So, we want the kids to be able to be warm, but just don't wear, you know, in town cold like you want to see.
I agree.
Like if that bulky jacket should be kept in students' lockers?
Yes, perfect.
Or, but you know what? If it does get cold in classrooms, I mean, I know what it's like when you're sitting and trying to work or learn when you're cold. I mean, with the hats, we have also with teacher discretion. I mean, if something happened to the heat in part of the building and it was cold, I sure would want a teacher to be able to say, you know what, it's okay, go down and get your jacket. Right, I mean?
They're not going to get in trouble, but if it ever happened where we had, we've lost heat in a part of the building, or the class was going to go outside and they were cold and people keep their jackets on in class? I mean, that's what should be okay.
I will say too, I think, I think it's, kids will really appreciate being able to wear hats. I know that probably a lot of people aren't going to like it, but I, I think the students are really going to like that.
Yeah. There are so many times where I'm at a band concert, or a play performance, or graduation even, and there's uncles and dads, and even some, some aunts and aunts, that they're wearing hats when they come into the auditorium. And I don't want a piece that, I want them to be there celebrating their student that they're watching. And I don't care if they wear a hat. You know, so I, it's more or less battle to fight with, with adults and kids, yeah, so.
I do think, and just to add to that too, and I know we talked a little bit about this, I mean, there's still an etiquette piece to that, that I think we still need to teach. You know, especially when we have, we're talking about having a potential public auditorium program with our students to celebrate the Bell Me, the award. Again, we've talked about this potentially, maybe in October, so we'll have community members with our students. I mean, I hope the community members will practice that etiquette also. I mean, it's going to be a performance, or it's going to be a celebration of flag, the flag and patriotism. And so, I think we would remind them, that, you know, you're in the auditorium, please take your hat off. I mean, that.
We could, but we, we have Veterans Day programs every year, and veterans wear hats. You know, and I don't want to tell the veterans, oh, we have a no hat rule. I mean, I, I feel like it's not about respect anymore. I, I think, I think that the intent of people wearing hats is not, they're not intending to be disrespectful. And I think that's the mindset we all have to work on flipping, even myself.
And one thing too, again, just little semantic battles that we deal with, that are just kind of a time suck. We've had students come in and argue, how come Officer Casey or Officer Halverson get to wear a baseball hat and I, and I can't, I'm sent to the office, that, that type of a thing? And I know it's part of the, they may have to explain, it's part of the uniform, blah, blah, blah. And I'm literally wasting my time when there's a kid crying in crisis over here so that I can get this kid back to algebra class over his, he said, she said, how come this? So, I think, you know, by, by allowing hats for the few students that are going to do it, it's, it's just one more thing of hanging on top of it, that we can invest our time and energy into areas that are real needed.
You know, we, we have in our handbook here about the Pledge Allegiance, right? At least once a week, I think it is. There is an element of respect. And if we don't teach some of that, is that all going to fall by the wayside? I mean, at least, I mean, I understand picking our battles, but at least when there's the Pledge Allegiance, the Star Spangled Banner, I just feel like hats should come off for that.
And that's simple language that we could have, we go to a sporting event and say, you know, please stand and remove your caps?
Yes.
That's it.
Or, or in our classrooms, when they stand up and say the Pledge Allegiance.
But you can't force them, you're going to, if you wish, please stand.
Right, if they, if they do stand and choose to do it, I just feel like there is some, there's some sense of respect involved.
Right.
And I think, you know what, even if there's adults that come in our auditorium that aren't mindful and respectful of that, I think it shows well for our student body. If, you know, like, and I get, there's times where it doesn't matter if they have a hat on or not. But there are times that it does matter.
And that's why we put teacher discretion, and I can easily add to my announcements when we say the Pledge Allegiance, please rise, take off your, any night covering, so.
I think that would be.
Yep.
Good discussion, okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
For the same sign? Motion carried.
What are we, was that the early learning?
I'm in part of the Hiving High School, we can do that in a quicker, when we get there.
We'll be right with you there, Mr. Malay, I'll just wrap it up here. Item, after the motion to approve the Greenaven Elementary Student Handbook for 2024-2025 school year.
So.
Support.
White Director Martin, support White Director Egan, any discussion?
So, so are these other handbooks live, like the high school one?
Yes, so they, they're all, everything in here is link-generated. So, it's all, so, in the world of like Google Docs, it gets created, put a link, and then we paste the link on the site, we paste the link, all, like all of our policies are linked in our handbook, so you can just click, load the policies, so yes, yes, we have these.
We can add a policy.
You can, yeah, yep.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
For the same sign? Motion carried, thank you.
Item G is a motion to approve the Washington Elementary Student Handbook for 2024-2025 school year.
Oh, no.
Support. White Director Coulter, support White Director McGlaughlin, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
For the same sign? Motion carried, thank you.
Item H is a motion to approve the Lincoln Middle School Student Parent Handbook for 2024-2025 school year.
So.
Support. White Director Gowardy, support White Director Martin, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
For the same sign? Motion carried, thank you.
Item I is a motion to approve the Hiving High School Student Parent Handbook for 2024-2025 school year.
Move. Support. White Director Egan, support White Director Coulter, any discussion?
Yeah, Chair, I, we received some comments from parents about the cell phone policy. And I think it was from a couple of different perspectives. The first was that, again, referred back to the Ed Policy Bill, that by March 2025, we have to have a cell phone policy. And you know, I thought we did on our website, but we don't.
Just in our handbooks.
In our handbooks, right. And, and Principal Socorro and I had a good conversation this morning. And I thought it was schools had to have them, but it says it requires districts and charter schools to adopt a policy. So, I'm assuming we'll be adopting district-wide policy, probably pulling in from all of them.
Yep.
But many of our neighboring communities have gone to not allowing the cell phones in classrooms. And as I thought about it from this parent's perspective, we do a really good job. Joel Anderson does an amazing job locking down firewalls, making sure of the iPads, you know, but, you know, cell phones in classrooms, so who knows what they're accessing on cell phones? The other piece of it was just, from this parent's perspective, disruption and maybe not completing assignments as thoroughly as, as they could, because if you're done with your assignment, then you can take your cell phone out. So, are they really focusing on their assignment? And should there be other enrichment activities where they're done if they're assigned it, rather than their cell phone? And then it's another pers, oh, the other perspective of it's at the teacher's discretion. So, are we, A, making it difficult for students to know that, well, in this classroom, I can use my cell phone, in this one, I can't? And then does it create a little bit of a contentious situation between students and some teachers? And are they more inclined to take classes from the teacher that they can have their cell phone versus not? So, all I'm asking is, March 15th is going to come, we're going to have to have a policy. I know I had a wonderful conversation with Principal Socorro, who's talked to student government and put a lot of thought into it, but as a school board, we have to have a policy. And I think there's as many parents that are probably for it as against it. You know, like, I don't know, Juney or the people I was talking to, parents can, can have their cell phones, or not give their students cell phones, which is true. But I'm also hearing that there's some teachers that ask the students to use their cell phones to do math as a calculator, to look up stuff. I mean, we use iPads, and I hope as a district, if they need calculators, we're providing calculators. So, I don't know, I'm just putting this conversation out there, I'm not saying one way or another. It's just, I think there's different perspectives, and we have to have a policy. So, we might as well start thinking about it.
And I know we had another parent send us a document that the Luth adopted, and we've responded to that on behalf of all of us here.
Yep.
So, I, I know the. Um, so, um, I, I know the, the parent that Director McLaughlin is talking about, um, and, um, I assure those parents, they are not the only ones who are concerned about it, because I've also been contacted about that and that's another. I, I've also, there's a few coaches who also have made comments about it, that they, they don't like that when they're in the, um, suburbs or on the bus, that that's what the athletes are just focused on either, so I mean, I, I know some of our coaches don't, don't like that either, but, so we'll see how that turns out.
Well, and I did some reading after I talked to the parent, got in contact, and did a little bit of research on some of the other school districts that have had a wait for the date. And even though they let students take their cell phones out at lunchtime, after school, you know, we have invested a lot in mental health in this district. We want our students to achieve academically, we want positive student behavior, and I don't think our cell phones contribute a distracting amount.
Well, I think, personally, I think we should look at this at a later date, we have till March.
Right.
Get the plus and minuses of what the students think about the administration thing.
N S E A.
Right. And see what they think. I know what my personal family did, so, they'll hear when we have a discussion, so. I think we should just do it at the expected date, when we're going to do it, at a later meeting and go from there.
And maybe, you know, like, we have a student rep that did a survey last year. I mean, maybe that's a good project for our student rep to try to get input, and then we'll have the data to make a, a solid decision.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Motion carried, thank you.
Item J is a motion to approve the Blue Jacket Virtual Student Handbook for the two thousand twenty four, two thousand twenty five school year.
So.
Support. White Director McLaughlin, support White Director Martin, any discussion?
I just say that, uh, that this is a part of the high school handbook, but we really felt, you know, new, new program, it's standalone that we approved this separately, but this is also a part of the high school handbook. I just wanted to draw attention to it for you, for that reason, so.
And then the, the plan for the future is, you know, if this is something that we expand and continue, that the, this would just be migrated into the regular handbook and it would just be another.
Yep.
Item, but for, like Mr. Coulter said, this first year, we just, we wanted to keep it separate so that it's not confused or students who aren't taking, in online class, aren't really confused. If they see that, like, what is this, I wasn't aware of, so that's why I said that.
You know, Chair, can I back up to the high school handbook?
Sure, as long as it's not real on.
No, all I want to say is, there's a, there's a big athletic component in here, and I know this past year, past few years, trying to communicate to people to follow the chain of command if there's concerns. Should we put that in this handbook so it's perfectly clear what the chain of command is? So if it's an athlete that has a problem with something, it's spelled out, because it seems as though it's, um, a little bit different across the sports on what different coaches communicate and if there is an athletic book that's handed over or not, should we put our, our communication protocol in here? It doesn't have to be done at all, but just something to think about.
So, Renee, so Keith will typically do a separate handbook?
Yeah, and then his, I mean, we share a document, and he updates the athletic part and Chad and I do the, the academic part. We, we work together on it, but we're trying to put that in.
So Keith does this part in the high school?
And he has a, he, he has a committee every few years to, to review, because we have, we have stricter, um, consequences or violations than the state requires. And that was done by a whole committee of teachers, parents, coaches, and so, um, they're going to be reconvening to look at that again. Whatever it is, just if it's communicated, so it's transparent across the board.
Yeah, and I think that each team has to follow the same protocol that we have for the athletic department, so there's no question.
Even Keith?
Correct.
Thank you. Nothing to be sort of thank you for, you have additional information. With that, move to item eight, discussion items, I have one, after this reading, we're going to move to a working session to follow. There are three items, the school board agenda working session, operating referendum, like, close a, I saw, and B, goals for tentative evaluation. And I think we, we tend in a break, we're going to.
Uh, Mr. Chair, we're going to go to item J.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Motion carried, thank you. Mail to back it up if we have.
So.
Thank you. Any other discussion items? Hearing none, Director Coulter?
All, motion to adjourn.
We'll get you in the meeting room here, and it's four thirty, and we'll see you in ten minutes and thank everybody for coming.